At this time, I will call a meeting of the Franklin Township Board of Trustees regular business meeting for October seventeenth at twelve oh one P M to order, and I would like to ask Chief Smith if he would open us with prayer.
God and heaven, Lord, we thank you for this day of life. Lord, we ask for your blessing hand upon us today. I ask that you be with each and every one of us, our families. Help us make the best decisions we can in the township. In Jesus's name, amen.
Jan, will you lead us to the place?
Yes, I will. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Major, will you please give us a little call?
Uh, yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Blemmons?
Yes.
Mr. Leiser?
Yes.
And Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
All right, moving on to old business we have none. Patty Spencer, you're up.
Happy Thursday, everybody.
Happy Thursday to you.
Don't have a whole lot, um, this time. Um, the first thing under Health and Safety, their Columbus Public Health is doing flu clinics um, at Fire Station Ten on West Broad Street. Uh, the first one is tomorrow, October eighteen, and the second one is November twenty-second. Both of them from ten A M to six P M. Um, they also are offering flu vaccinations for homebound Franklin County residents. And if you need a home visit, I have a phone number for you to call. Um, the second thing is, um, they are offering information and, um, for respite care. And that is through the Senior Auctions Program that the city offers. And I have a phone number there, uh, for that, and also, um, there's information on their website. Um, then apparently they are making changes to the SNAP program, which is the Ohio Supplemental Nutritional Assistance Program. And, um, this went into effect October first. And it's, uh, to make things easier to find work and advancement in careers. And I have information on that and website to get to. And the last thing I have is the Winter Crisis Program, which, um, they are accepting applications from, uh, citizens from November first um, to, into March first of two thousand and twenty-five. And the program provides assistance, um, per heating season, which would be our winter season. Um, and emergency heat, which can also help pay for the heating system repairs, up to fifteen hundred dollars in certain cases. Um, I've got a phone number and a website to make an appointment if anybody needs it.
Good. We have, we have a, we have a lot of, um, new faces in the audience. You want to tell everybody?
Who, who I am?
Who I am and who you're with.
I am the zoning chair for the Southwest Area Commission, uh, City of Columbus. And our boundaries, which includes all of this area, stretches from the south to seventy, to the west, the railroad tracks, to the east, the Scioto River, and to the north, the middle of Mount Street. So we have quite a large area. Um, our area encompasses Franklin Township, Jackson Township, County, and of course City.
And she has a wealth of information, so you can see her afterwards. We appreciate everything you do for us.
We appreciate you coming to our meeting, and also you want to tell them about your meeting, kids people want to come to your meeting.
Oh, well, our meetings are the second Tuesday of every month, except December, here at this building, so you can't get lost. And, um, most of the time it's fairly mundane. Um, what we have coming before us is generally, uh, zoning information. We have a lot of people sometimes from the City of Columbus that comes in to tell us what they do, what, uh, departments are offering. Um, the two current things that we've been working on was, um, Double Happy at the corner of Hopkins and, um, Brown Road, which, um, has now been renamed Bumble?
Bumble.
Bumble, and it's become a dog park. And the second thing that really is going to have a large impact on the area commission's area is, um, redoing of Cooper Stadium area with apartments, um, multi types of businesses, and a possible, um, event place to go, so.
Are they gonna keep the structure up? I mean, that old ballpark, I'm a kid going there, and I hate to see all that tore down.
Yeah, they, they're, they're wanting to keep, but the, um, they came before us last Tuesday, um, for signage of that. And they were looking at wanting to put, one sign was like sixty-five foot by thirty-seven foot that would, um, show to the freeway. Another one was on Mount Street, and then I think it was a total of about ten different signages. And, um, at this point, we've kind of sent them back to do more homework, um, because they had not satisfied any of the concerns that any of the city departments had had over the signage.
I know one thing about Columbus, I'm, but they're good, a record historical places.
But you go through Columbus stuff all the time.
Have, have they been maintaining any, any of those structures?
I'm sorry?
Have they been maintaining any of the structures?
They were, when we approved them in the beginning, um, I believe it was twenty nineteen, they wanted to keep part of the stadium, and then they were going to also put businesses under the stadium. And they were going to keep the, uh, ticket office building and the highway patrol building. That was twenty nineteen.
Is it structurally sound?
Barry, there's no questions at this time? If you want a question, uh, we have, we have a business meeting here.
I don't know if I, I would be capable of remembering that far back.
Yeah, we have a business meeting, we have to continue to, uh, go through.
So anyway, I will leave this, and that, that is who I am. If anybody has any questions or, you know, you need any help with anything, even if it's, you don't know whether it's in your area or not, I can, I can do what I can.
Yep, and Patty always does stay until the end of the meeting, so.
I do.
And she'll, she'll be happy to meet with anybody afterwards.
And I will leave these up here with you if anybody.
Yep, we appreciate you. We, we, I'm still wanting to get you a bulletin board. So, all right, moving on, um, Ms. Fleishman, do you have any comments or questions from the public?
Uh, we do. We have, uh, three speakers today.
All right.
Uh, what, you'll get three minutes to speak. We won't interrupt, so you'll be able to say what you want. And then after your three minutes is up, then we'll comment, which has no time. First, we have Madison, if you'd like to come up.
If it's more, you can do it from right there.
If you want to.
That's okay.
Just, just say your name, your address, and speak loudly because it's recorded and gonna be on recording here.
Okay, my name's Madison Russell. I live at eight four nine Richter Road, uh, Columbus, Ohio. We, I've lived there for three years. My husband's family's been there since the forties. It's always been, these are my neighbors. Um, we've always had a pretty tight-knit community. Everybody knows each other. Y'all communicate. We've had some flooding last couple of years, so a lot of people, no doubt, a lot of new people have come in and haven't really been able to get familiar with everybody. Uh, some of the newer neighbors have brought in their dirt bikes, their A T Vs. They've been ripping up and down our roads. I can't put this one down for a nap. Every time I put them down for a nap, there's a motorcycle engine running. It's one's a motorcycle, one, I can't remember what they're called. They're motorcycles, but the tires are really, really big.
It's like a board, isn't it?
Hit bike, I guess.
Mini, yeah, mini bikes.
Something like that. And they take the exhaust off. And so they've been going up and down the street. I can't take them for walks, 'cause I'm afraid I'm gonna get hit, to be completely honest with you. They started racing other cars, for some of the other kids in the streets, they'll race their dirt bikes and their cars up and down the road. And then our neighbor, who's unable to make it, uh, there's about nine of us that have all come together and have the conversation, not only with each other, but with the kids who are doing it. Um, she's a empty lot next to her house, state-owned. Uh, FEMA came in and bought it out after it flooded. Uh, um, they've been ripping through there, and they've now started bringing their Jeep Grand Cherokee up and down, all in hours of the night. We've called the cops. Everybody's called the cops. It's very rare that they show up. We were told last, on Sunday, my husband called three times, was hung up on twice. Third time they got through, they came out and told us we just ran out of priority. Um, with my kids, I don't really necessarily appreciate being told they ran out of priority, because I, it would be a priority if I hadn't forbid where I'd be walking them and we're getting hit by a car or a dirt bike. I don't think that's fair. Um, we were told that they can't do anything, because there's no trespassing signs. There are, but it's because of the construction. I actually can't see them. Um, something needs to be done. Someone, either us, kids riding a dirt bike, somebody's gonna get hurt, because they're not wearing helmets either, and they have kids on them. It's just a mess. It's a whole mess.
Okay, is that it?
Yeah.
Okay. As far as being priority, the, the, the chief can speak on this probably better than I can. They do rank, it's not that you're not a priority, but the calls that they, how they rank calls, um, priority, they, they, they assign them a, it's a letter, correct?
Yes.
You, you want to speak on it, chief?
Yeah, I, I, I was gonna talk about it anyway. Um, every call that comes into the dispatch center receives a priority code based on, is it violent, or, or what type of call it is. They're all important. Um, and I've talked to a couple residents this week from Richter who stopped in. Uh, so that is a priority. We are trying to put extra patrols in that area. Um, I mean, it's even worse because of Hart Road. So we are trying to devote as much attention to it as we can.
Mm-hmm.
We didn't talk about it, but it was my turn, but we, we are, we are aware of it and trying to address it. We've been impounding some bikes from Wood, Hart Road, Brown Road. I mean, every time we catch them, they're not, they're not allowed to be on the street. So one of the things we do is impound the bike.
Can I say one thing? It's okay.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I do know that one of the bikes that was taken from Hart, they are, have made everybody aware that they would, just went and bought a new one, and it was the same person.
No, I know.
Okay, I just wanted you to know.
You can't stop them from doing that. Um, but if it's not allowed to be on the road, then we will impound the bike.
Mm-hmm.
Um, they either have to prove they own it to get it out of the impound,
Right.
or obviously just go buy a new one, but you would think they would ride it where they're allowed to as opposed to pay to get a new bike, but.
Is there some kind of citation that comes with that? When you take their bike and it's a kid, do you like take him to their parents, or is there anything? I'm just curious. I don't know how it works myself.
Yeah, it, it's a normal traffic tickets. Um, like, if you don't have an operator's license, it can't be on the road. Um, so you're, you're charged with either whatever, you know, reckless operation. And then with the traffic ticket, if you're a juvenile, you'd have to go to court with a parent, um, and then we impound the bike also.
So chief, has anyone got these, um, uh, impounds back? Have they, do we know?
Um, I don't know. I mean, if they can prove they own it, then they can legitimately get it back.
Okay.
We can't hold them. Uh, we can only impound them at that time.
Have we made contact with the residents? My question is too. Is it renters, or do they own? And then have we made contact with them, you know, just stop in and say, hey, we've had a lot of complaints? You know, this is what's gonna happen if we come back out here and we catch you. You're gonna get impound, you're gonna get this, 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 and this. This isn't a place that you can ride these.
Right.
And especially riding on the, the Franklin County where they took the buyout. That property is private property for Franklin County Commissioners. Um, do we need anything from the Commissioners to say?
I don't think so. I think we can enforce it on their behalf. I mean, like we would anywhere else. Um, I want to say that we probably impounded a junk car off there for them.
Okay.
So, but as opposed to buyers renters, I don't know that. Um, and the two that I know Kidwell got, I believe the parents were there, so the parent was aware that we were taking the bikes. Um, honestly, my opinion, it's a parenting issue.
Absolutely.
The parents know. They know what their kids are doing, and if you don't, that's your fault too.
Well, you can hear them out there.
Well, that's what I mean. So the parents don't care. Um, unfortunately, you know, Franklin County does not consider that child endangering if you let your kid do that necessarily. Um, so, but to your question, John, yeah, the parents are aware, um, in most cases. And they're definitely aware when, if it's a juvenile, when they have to go to court.
Right.
Because they have to go with them.
Do we know the address where they're coming from?
It's multiple addresses.
Okay. And then you had an address, ma'am?
Eight ten Hart.
Eight ten Hart? Okay.
And they just bought their house, and mom sits on the porch and watches them do it.
Okay, so eight ten Hart, if we can make a note of that. And then, um, are we able to, possibly, we can say we tried. If we send them a letter from here, letting them know that in Franklin, you know, welcome to the community, realize you can't ride A T Vs and motorcycles on private property as well as on the street.
There's also, there's an A T V also on Richter Road that goes up and down the road.
Do you know what address that's?
Eleven eighty.
Eleven eighty Richter?
Yes.
Okay, so we have two addresses that we know that these are.
It's a blue A T V.
Okay.
And, and chief, any other address you have? Can you get up, get, get, get that address, was Nicole, and we'll, we'll send a letter out?
Yeah.
And then that way, when we do impound, or we do see them, a letter may be nothing, it may not do anything, but at least we took the steps. And even if it's bad parenting and they're not gonna do anything, well, it goes to court. We warned you. We sent you a letter. We informed you what the regulations and laws are, which, you know, obviously all of us pretty much would take as standard. So this is just putting our ducks in a row so that, you know, that we can ask for the, uh, stringent ruling that would come down so that the parents are held accountable for, for them, because it's not so much to punish the kid as to say, you know, at that age, you don't have as much fear as you do when you get older. Um, and you're out there just ripping it up and, and everything like that, and, and you're disregarding to everything else, so not only are you endangering, the child is endangering himself, but others that may be there, because you may be driving down the road and you swerve to keep from hitting him, and you go into ditch, and then you hurt yourself.
Yes.
So there's a, there's a whole host that can come behind that, so. Um, John, you're up next.
Yes, I want to state that I agree with Madison about the same complaint I have. However, there's another thing I want to add. We're getting unlawful gunfire up, somewhere up in Richter Road. Uh, I know it's an auto, semi-automatic, because it's, it's multiple shots going off all the time. Now, it doesn't happen every, every night, but it occasionally does happen. And I don't know where these stray bullets are going.
Sure.
And, uh, I thought they, uh, City of Columbus or the county or somebody had that new sound effect where the explosive spot where this gunfire is coming from. But apparently, I don't know, no, nobody's working, you know, listening to it. I, my neighbor up there, I, you know, she was going, I told her, stay home, because you don't know what's up, or, you know, could be a bunch of white supremacists up there shooting guns off. Now, you know, people want to get involved, get shot, but there has been occasionally gunfire going off, all hours of the night.
Chief, what, what is the ordinance on, on gunfire, on firing guns in the township?
In the township, you're allowed to fire a gun, but it has to be not towards a habitated area, meaning you have to have a suitable backstop. Um, you can't be putting other people in danger. I mean, each situation is gonna be different. Um, I'm not familiar with that one. I know we have a couple up in Moneyback who, who we've had, you know, uh, calls for target practicing.
And how you got with it.
Checked those out, those were safe. Um, so each one is different. If you're shooting in your backyard, there's a house behind your backyard, you can't do that. You know, so there's state violations against that. Um, but it, it just depends, uh, Jim, you know.
Yeah, I noticed gunfire going off on Richter Road, up in a field area up through there, also on Hart Road, uh, down there by the creek, around in them houses, somewhere firing weapons off in there.
So when you.
It's automatic gunfire.
Have you guys called the Sheriff's Department when you hear that?
We, we hear, we call, but usually have to go through, by the time they get out, they're stopped.
Right. But the good thing is, you may think that it, you waste of your time, but what it does is it makes a record, and there's an actual record so that we can show that there's been a ongoing issue with this. Um, if nobody calls at all, just like the A T Vs, if nobody calls at all, then it's like, well, it hasn't been that big of a deal, because they go by stats. And here in a little bit, when the chief reads off his stats, and that's kind of why I asked it come in today, because we're all here. It's, we all learn the situation at one time, and then something can get done versus just, you know, when you, someone calls me, I still have to bring it to the other three. So this is a good day that we can, um, potentially, hopefully, put it into this, and we have a plan going forward. Hopefully, we can curb, um, the issues going on.
No, I just wanted to add one thing. My neighbor across street Cathy, she can't be here today, because, you know, she had some church or organization thing going on. However, uh, several months ago, might have been longer, she had a leak in her roof, you know? She called a roof, the roofer in, to find out what the leak was. Well, he got up there and he found out it was a bullet hole in the roof.
Wow.
And that was causing the leak coming down in her house.
Okay.
I, I see chief back there writing, so I'm sure he's gonna pass it on to us.
Yeah, see, and this is a perfect example of, uh, if people call in when they hear that, it's documented now that there were people shooting in that area and et cetera. Who knows if the insurance now, you can prove that there was an incident in that area. By that, it helps not only us, but it helps the homeowners as well. So anytime you see that and you hear that, always just make that phone call, even if you think they're just gonna hang up on you or whatever. Once you made that call, there's a record. So that's what we need to be able to use for our benefit to help you. So they will say, help us help you, so.
Lastly, I don't think that, uh, Spotify that you're talking about.
That's not county.
That's, that's gonna be Columbus and.
Yeah, I didn't know.
Yeah, they don't share.
Somebody said that there was one located down in the, uh, down in the bottoms area, you know, down there on.
Yeah, but that wouldn't pick up.
And I, I didn't know if it could pick up that far out or not.
I do think they're mobile too, and they move them around, because I seen them put them over in West Gate Park a lot.
Yeah.
Um, but we, we don't have them in a big fortune. I, I just wanted you to know, that's all. It's not that the chief isn't doing his job, or we're not checking on him when we hear him go off. It's, we don't have it to hear.
I'm just worried about stray bullets.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, no, I get it.
Yeah. Joe?
Well, about everything has been covered.
Okay.
Uh, as far as the noise, the, the mini bikes and the A T Vs going up and down the road. Uh, the speed limit's twenty-five, not fifty-five.
Absolutely.
You've got cars coming, you've got, you've got Hart Road shut off on counter bridge. I understand that.
Mm-hmm.
But you've got cars and trucks racing across that, that side road down along the lake, comes up that hill, then they floor it, and they go speeding down the road. Same way we're coming up the road, they're speeding and going, cutting through. Now you've got a dirt road going through those two properties where they're doing that construction by that bridge.
Yeah.
And that, in the evenings, after they're done with that construction, when they're done work, there's cars going in.
Cutting through.
Cutting through there. Now what's gonna become of that? Now that you've got a speed monitor there, right, I'd say west of Abus, it should be turned around the other way, facing that hill where it dead ends.
Gotcha.
Because when they're coming over that hill is when they're flooring it.
So chief, are we able to, um?
Spin it around?
Yeah, spin it around, as well as maybe, we get so many calls. I've rode with our officers, and it's nothing to be run after run, but if we could get a officer free, and then sometimes we have grants that cover overtime, if that is one of the areas that, you know, for the people cutting through, if we could work that, that would be great.
Now, uh, Friday, there was two officers there, and I can window, and I can't think of the other guy. I talked to them about it, and while we was there discussing the problem, one come over the hill and floored it. And I said, see there, see what I'm talking about? And they chased him. They, they stopped him there on Richter Road toward, like, around the road. They got him.
Yeah.
But that's what I'm talking about, right on the open.
Yeah.
They were there investigating the dirt bike.
Yeah, the dirt bike.
They, they, they were behind the bushes. This guy supplied it, and they got him good. And, you know, that was one of the most happiest times I had in my whole life.
Yes, yes.
Moving on, um.
But I can't think of anything else.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you. Moving on. Chief Smith, well, you've been talking already. You're up.
Segue right into Richter, Richter Road. Um, so we are stepping up patrols on Richter. Um, it is a problem, especially, I know Hart Road's supposed to be probably a few more weeks. I don't know. Jim may have more information. Um, but they're using it as a cut through. It is definitely a problem. So we can spin that speed sign, put it on the other side and see if that.
Maybe alternate, you know, one week or.
Yeah, we usually do, two weeks, and then we kind of move it around.
Hey, we appreciate what you're doing, chief, for your time.
Yeah, sure. Let me, let me remind everybody, this is not a comment time for comments.
Um, so we are working on Richter Road. Um, with that, I will segue right into the last two spots for our, our traffic, uh, detection system. So Alkya, the one on Hickory Run is, you know, the average speed was maybe thirty, so that's, that's what I expected to be. Um, Alkya Road, however, the average speed is about seventy.
Wow.
That's not everybody, of course, that's just an average. Um, but during the week, on each side, you had fifty-three thousand two hundred seventy-nine car hundreds, and then fifty-four thousand two hundred fifty, so the average speed is about seventy. So that's also one that we need to work for the next few weeks, um, so we can address that, and I can present that in the next meeting. So those are on the radar. With that said, so we've talked before about, uh, it would be Medal of Honor awards in relation to the critical incident back in May at the George Phil Klein. So those are in the process of being ordered, uh, like you and I talked about. And I should, you know, sometimes it takes a couple weeks, so hopefully by either next meeting or the one after, we can present those at a township meeting.
Okay.
Also, the sheriff's office does what's called a star award every year. They stopped during COVID, but they've since started up. Uh, this year, uh, I recommended Lieutenant Rappaz, he put a little pat on the back. So he was accepted for the star award. That is November eighth. Um, if anybody's had a resident that taken information, let me know, and get that link sent over to you.
Okay. Is he back, is he back to work now, part-time, or?
Oh, he's back to work on my duty.
Okay.
So.
What's his days?
Um, he is all Friday, Saturday.
Okay.
So he'll be back Monday.
Hmm?
He's working every day.
Okay.
Sort of. Um, so, good afternoon. Uh, I wanted to talk about the thirteenth officer. After looking at all of our stats, our schedules, everything we have going on, I believe that it is a better use of our officer to, I, I have two issues I need to kind of take care of with this officer. One is to mitigate the overtime between second and third, between that eleven P M to three A M shift, because that's typically the, the lowest staffing shift. And also, obviously, traffic complaints is, I think, the other biggest thing we get in relation, uh, in addition to like drug activity and things like that. So I will put it together for the board, but what I'm leaning towards is probably, uh, four ten-hour days. Uh, they would come in, it would either be four P to two A or five to three, so I can capture that overtime period, and also for traffic control. So this person would be primarily dedicated to traffic, um, with the exception of priority runs, or if we're short-staffed, obviously, or something like that, would take precedence over, uh, traffic.
I think that one of the things that we're seeing, and more and more residents are seeing, um, anytime that we can make a difference with the. um, anytime that we can make a difference with the traffic, because as I know, being out with the police to see what they're doing, it is unreal out there, you can't police your way out of it, it's like a babysitting, you go from run to run to run to run, and that makes it very tough, but having this where you overlap, and we can get some trafficking in there, um, I think that that's excellent for the residents.
Well, it'll be really effective.
Absolutely.
I've already talked to Steve, Lieutenant Rappas is gonna handle the junk cars.
The which cars?
The junk cars.
Junk junk.
Remember, that was an issue we wanted to kind of take care of. Um, it's not that big of a task, so, but we just want, so that's-
I guess good use.
Um, let's see, Richter, pencil, no, there we go. Nope, I will, why do I want to? So all three of you gentlemen have the quote I was asked to get, um, for the, uh, sign for, by the Christmas tree when we do the tree lighting. I wanted to kind of explain that a little bit. So I asked him for two different quotes. The first one is an aluminum cast frame, like you would basically see bolted to a building. They can either be aluminum or bronze, they have raised lettering. Um, that type is, and that can also be on a pole. I'm not sure how effective, they come with a pole, but it's a steel rod that's maybe three-eighths of an inch. So I don't, that'll probably wiggle, yeah, I'm not sure how that will.
Yeah.
Um, so that one is just over, uh, three hundred dollars. So you, both of these are eight by ten. Uh, the other one is an aluminum flame, or frame, sorry, with black, Durablack insert, which is a heavy-duty, almost like a polymer-type material. However, the writing or whatever the inscription is, is gonna be laser-cut into it, so it's much cheaper. Um, and that would is a hundred and forty-nine dollars, and that also includes the post. Um, one takes four weeks, one takes ten days. We have plenty of time for whatever the board wants to decide.
So again, this sign is for, what's it?
For Brown's Tires presenting the Christmas tree.
Gotcha, okay, I just wanted to make sure. Mr. Chairman, I mean, what is the pleasure of the committee as far as this goes? What do you think looks best for the purpose of this sign?
Um, they both look really nice in the showroom, they're, they're both, both, both signs are really nice. Um, the one for a hundred and forty-nine would be just fine.
Okay.
Um, I'm not sure how well, again, it would stay on a pole. You know, overtime, it might be better attached to the building, but they can both be attached to the building if we decide we don't want to use a pole.
So Mr. Blevins?
I would go one, I would go with the one forty-nine for sure.
Okay. The reason that I'm asking, I realize it's a hundred and forty-nine out now, but the durability and the wear over a period of time, would it be better to have the aluminum one versus the other one? That's the only thing on-
They're better, they're better than aluminum, though.
Okay. The, the cost difference-
The difference is raised letter.
Yes. Oh.
Essentially just the raised letters.
Okay.
So much like, uh-
Well, the committee recommends, what, what I am hearing, correct me if I'm wrong, the committee is recommending the hundred and forty-nine, the aluminum sign with the black.
Durablack insert?
I can tell you, and we don't have, the best part about this is we don't have to make a decision today.
Okay.
It's literally right down the road here.
Okay.
You can probably throw it and hit it with a rock, basically, it's off air for a bike. If you'd like to take, we don't have to decide today, if you have time in the next two weeks to stop in there and take a look at it yourself.
Sure.
We can hold off till then, it's up to you guys.
I, Mr. Chairman, um, just to move things along, I'm fine and feel confident in the proposed, uh, pricing that if the board says things to, uh, move forward with this, we could, uh, do this today.
I'm, I'm good, if you wanna-
So be it resolved-
You wanna make that, we can do it.
Yes, sir. Be it resolved by the Board of Trustees, Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board accepts, um, the, uh, quote for a hundred and forty-nine dollars for aluminum frame with black, uh, dual-insert, uh, letters, eight by ten posts included. Uh, this will, uh, be ready in ten days from the time of ordering. If there is no further question on this, I would ask for a second.
You make that a motion or a resolution?
And this is a resolution, since we're spending money.
And, and the resolution will, the number will be filled in?
At a, at a later date. We don't have it here at the table, and, and on my apologies to the, to the board, we customally usually have it, but there's no sense to come back with this if we can get all our ducks in a row now.
I, I would, I would agree with you, and don't apologize to the board, this is something we've all just given today.
Sir, she has it for you.
Uh, she does, that's great. And the resolution, ma'am, would be?
Nine two five.
Nine two five.
Twenty-four, or two thousand four dash?
Yeah, twenty twenty-four, that's, nine two five.
Okay, got it. So, again, that resolution for that would be twenty, uh, twenty twenty-four nine two-
Hang on a second.
Sorry, I looked in the wrong one.
No worries.
Wrong quarter, it's one seventy-seven.
One seventy-seven.
I, I, I thought that sounded weird. I was going to implement numbers.
So, with said, with said, uh, resolution, that number will be twenty twenty-four, one seven seven. If there's no further questions on this, uh, gentlemen, again, I'd ask for a second.
I'll say it. Okay, and I will call for a roll call.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Flashman? Yes. And Mr. Leiser.
Yes. I let you second it, since you said on that committee.
Sure, no, I got it.
We just need, um, because we, at some point, and then we need to figure out what the inscription is.
And, and I'm not dead set on, you know, the post out there, but I just thought it would be by the tree, it would give them more recognition, but if, if it's better on the, on the building- But you get what I was asking about, a post next to the tree, that way- Can it be mounted on a, like a four by four post, it's just so high up out of the ground? If you, I mean, however you guys can mount it, yeah. Probably a better idea. I think it'd be more stable than just a-
Yeah, the wind blow over, someone trip over it.
Yeah, I mean, however, that's, that's not my, I'm- We get it. That's not my department. All right, anything else for us?
Uh, no, sir, unless you have questions?
I, I have a question for you, I, I know it, it's been some time, and you may not be able to speak on it. It may still be under, classified under investigation. Um, is there any news on the Sheriff's Department investigating the, the bad checks?
No.
Nothing else came back yet, okay. I just wanted to, I hadn't heard anything, and I just wanted to ask you and get it out there on record that we have not heard anything back yet.
Okay, and then I've got something real quick, and this may help you folks. So, um, I came to you, Byron, with the problem of trash at the Boost Mobile and that whole shopping center, and so he sent one of those letters that we're talking about sending out for you guys, and I want you to know, I'm reporting back that they are definitely taking care of it. I see a gentleman out there a couple of times a week, and it has worked well to send a letter to the property owner, and what you did. And so me and my neighbors, uh, want to thank you for doing that, and I thought it would let you guys know you may get some relief by that letter going out to the parents. If they're, if they're no good parents, they're gonna be no good parents. But hopefully they'll realize that, you know, it's not the thing to do, and that this letter will help, but I just wanted to let you know. And then Byron and I were at the, uh, Narcan giveaway again, yesterday is the second one, and the lady at Oak Street Health, uh, told us a piece of information that I thought was great. Is their third in the entire country, is that one right down there at Eakin Road and Harrisburg Pike, and their own entire company, they're the number three, uh, um-
The pharmacy?
Pharmacy and, uh, healthcare, and both health, or, yeah, Oak Street. So I just wanted to give you that report, and it, it went really well, we've improved a lot from week to week. We've got a system set up now, and so I think that's gonna be well on its way, and we can help some people. Several people from the township came by and were took in that, so.
I'll try to get out there one Wednesday, Wednesday's just tough for me, but. We used to, I used to go down with you when you passed it out before, just haven't been able to this time, but.
John, you have anything, you need to question?
I, I'm, I think I'm good. I'll, I'll find the property owners for those two addresses.
Yeah, I wrote them down too, did you get the first one, because I saw you write it, eight, ten?
Yes, sir. And then eleven eighty, Richard.
I'll go by myself and scope it out and stuff, and we'll get together. I mean, not that I can do anything, but I like to know who it is we're talking about when you guys talk to me and everything, so.
So-
Thank you.
The sad part is it coming all hours of the day and night, you know, one, two o'clock in the morning, or I'm down there. I know you can't be there twenty-four, seven, but, you know, that's-
Our goal is to take the bikes, so.
Um, Chief?
I talked to you afterwards, I think.
I did get a text first thing this morning from ODOT in regards to that homeless camp. And of course, working with Columbus, um, Layson, I can't think of who it was, um, they're out of there, but they're gonna clean, come in and see about cleaning up the mess. And, um, they are still moving forward with trying to see about putting a wall from Wilson Road all the way down, I don't know how far down, El Paso, for the noise from the freeway. So it looks very promising that, uh, ODOT may do that.
That would help tremendously.
And the sound, exactly.
Thanks, Chief.
All right, thank you, Chief, uh, Chief Arnold?
Good afternoon. I just have one, uh, quick tidbit, and then I'll entertain your questions. Uh, if you're wondering why there's a parade round of fire trucks at one ninety-two's the past three days on Solomon Avenue, we are coordinating with Marathon Oil, we have their National Emergency Response Trainer at the Firehouse currently, or they may be up on Wilson, or Fisher Road at the Storage Facilities. But, uh, we coordinated a training, and Columbus Fire are very interested, obviously, in how to protect those facilities. So they've been here the last three days, so one ninety-two's been packed with fire trucks.
I thought you guys just had some good lunch.
I'm jazzed.
I thought it was, oh, I thought it was chili cook on.
Anything else for us?
I don't have anything else.
All right. Um, on that sign, I looked into the quote that you forwarded to us. Um, can you check into the, I think we spoke on it, can you just check into, we don't need a permit, and?
Yeah, I did like that quote, and I'm waiting, like I said, I'm waiting on that call back, so.
Okay.
I'll get you something more concrete and better listing of what the actual-
Yeah, that was my, I just picked up on that, and I make sure they're not charging us tax.
For sure.
John, you have anything, Mike, you have anything?
I do, upon the, I've read it also, and at the very bottom, it states that, uh, they, they don't even start to work until they receive a deposit.
Yes.
So they haven't started to work, correct?
No, gosh.
Okay, so-
We, I don't even think we-
If, uh, I just wanted it to be out there as an option, I don't care, whatever the board's pleasure is on it, but I think Steve's, uh, has a man who did this sign out here, do you understand what I'm trying to say? And so I think at some, some point in time, we should, uh, do the couple of quote things would work a better, uh-
Never hurts to ask.
To, and, and I'm not opposed, and, and I, I seen your sign, and I get, it goes along with, uh, your whole, um-
Theme.
Theme and everything over there, and I got it and everything, and I'm still not opposed to it, but I'm just letting it be known that it's not like the sign is done and needs to be picked up, because-
No.
We haven't even paid the deposit check, because I checked, because I thought, oh, well, it's done, so it's a done deal, you know what I mean?
Like I, like I said, I honestly think the design is a hundred percent approved.
Okay.
Um, with Shakers, we ran to an issue where the county did not know that they were joining us. Do we need to change anything with the way that we do demos, that the county should be made aware of? Um, in this instance, I got a call from Stephen Renner, and the situation, they said they had a lot of stuff in the area, they just needed to know what was going on. So do we need a policy or a method in which we issue the demo permits that Franklin County knows about it, and everything in that area is good for what they're doing?
I believe it states right on the application that you are to, as the demolition crew, to make sure-
Okay.
To call the county, to make sure that everything's in order with the county. Uh, I believe Nicole and Todd and Bill Tool have looked over that application, and they might bold that, footprint that, or do something to draw more attention to that, because it's been an ongoing problem.
Yeah, so do we need to, before we issue it, that they bring something from the county, that they've already done their work before they come to us?
That's possible.
So because we bold it and we do things of that nature, so what ends up happening, um, is that, you know, things get delayed and et cetera. So in the future, if we would send them to the county first, and then they come to us, that would tend to alleviate any issues, um, getting back and forth, let them do the process through the county, they bring it to us, and then we proceed forward.
I think Nicole wanted to speak on that.
Nicole?
Does she kind of-
I was gonna say that we, um, already talked to Bill Tool about it, and he said that maybe forward, we just, we will not accept an upperment application until they've at least provided proof that they've submitted to do whatever's required. Um, but I also want to say that on the approvals, it does say, all connected utilities are to be disconnected, capped, and terminated in a safe, acceptable manner to the providing utility.
Okay.
So, um, when they would go out there to inspect, if it wasn't done, then they wouldn't receive their completion certificate. And they'd have to dig everything back.
Get interested for you.
Yeah, yeah, and I think it would be a good change so that we don't get in the middle of it like we are now. I'm surprised the gentleman from Shakers isn't here, because they pretty much stopped them until they comply with what the county wants.
According to Todd, um, he, he went ahead and submitted it, and I think he's waiting to get it back before he starts demo, that's why they haven't started demo yet.
Gotcha.
Um, but yeah, we're just not gonna accept permits until we have the, the document.
Perfect, that's all I-
Thank you, Nicole.
Also, I wanted to thank you very much for the last minute, us going to the Voter League of, um, the-
Women.
The women's-
Women's League of Voters.
Yes, thank you. Um, last week, um, there is a YouTube video where we spoke on it, and explained to them and the women voters, uh, of Franklin County, um, what's it mean for Franklin Township, their fire department going forward, what it looks like, and our home role. So I think it was very successful that we went there to, uh, speak on the matter, and I thank you very much for attending.
Yeah, we're having it.
Hey, Chief, I got a question, the fire lady.
Sir, there's no questions from the audience at this time.
You kidding me? We got a big tax lady coming up, I'd like to know what the money is earmarked for.
Sir, this is our business meeting, there's been several meetings in the, in the-
This is a Franklin Township business meeting, I'm part of Franklin Township, I'm paying taxes. I wanna, I wanna know where the money's earmarked for, does it go onto wages, does it go onto permit?
Sir, I'm, I'm asking you to wait until after the meeting to ask this question.
Why can't you ask?
Because this is our meeting, there was a time for questions.
When are you coming up for reelection, buddy?
You've, you've already had your time for questions. And we've had several meetings to inform the public, and no one showed up. So I'm asking you, this is the last time I'm gonna ask you not to interrupt the meeting. I've been pretty lenient up until this point in time.
Damn, okay. I'm gonna get you on election day, buddy.
Mr. Chairman, should we open up for any questions regarding?
No, thank you. Bob? Thank you. Uh, moving on, Mr. Major.
Jimmy, you wanna, Jimmy, start off for us?
Oh, yeah, no, I'm sorry. I got, I got my stats too.
Okay, once you do that, then I'll fill them in on the, uh, where we are with the building and-
Hello, everybody.
Permits and-
Just, I'm gonna give it, some listeners will trip, give you to ask questions.
Um, at the last meeting, uh-
And I agree with you.
Stats compiled, everything, but I got our stats for September. In September, we took, it was a brush, uh, once again, a lot of signs to repair, do have to township, move to cemetery, township cemetery. Installed a new sign at the cemetery, the old sign that was there, it had just kind of gotten old and faded, so just had to register place that way. Installed barricade, we had, had children services, we're environmental patrol, environmental patrol came to us, they were having trouble, and Pete was driving, he was playing the church, and they've got a garden area, and he's going down in behind us, he has built a barricade.
So where was this at? Children's Services?
Kind of what we had that night out.
Right, they go in-
Come around, so we just took some of the big logs and everything we had, and we went down, and we just built barricades, and they can't be seen anymore.
I believe it was a couple of meetings ago, you had to step out, because you had that meeting with them?
Yeah, it's, um, a lot of dumping going on down there, so we're just trying to-
Is that where the old cabins or stuff used to be, when that used to be some, yeah, something else years ago?
Yeah, but it, from what, um, Detective Petty's saying, it's working, so let's keep it going. We moved a line aside on a big run, picked up two loads of dump trash out of a broad lawn area, um, in the alleys, that was pretty horrendous. Sent out two more trash letters, repaired sixty foot- Sent out two more trash letters, repaired sixty foot storm sewer up at Plank and Dover. Kinda had a, uh, situation happen up there, which I did bring up in our last meeting. Gentleman putting in some storm, uncovered a complete mess that had been left for us, that we were completely unaware of from when the sanitary lines were put in. It kind of left us a mess, and we had to go in there and completely fix that, we weren't even aware that there was an issue. Fielded water, bared the community garden, painted curbs and hydrants in Westfield, um, painted curbs and hydrants in, in Rosary Edition. Installed the eight no parking signs up on Duster Mile, um, we're working on, and we're finishing up now, going through and painting all of our curbs, all of our hydrants, townshipwide. Right now with all the yellow paint. We do have, we, like, last month we did, we painted all the stop bars throughout the township. Attended the safety seminar at the county fairgrounds, so that's pretty much a stats from September, but I spent a lot of our time there. Um, I know on the agenda, you have a building update. I think I'm gonna turn that one over to Mr. Stevens.
Mr. Stevens, or Mr. Chairman, before we start, I have a couple of questions.
Yep.
Um, the high grass that was on Clymer, and I noticed it hasn't been cut yet, what are we doing on that? Is it timed out, or have we sent a letter?
We sent a letter, and it's timing out, I spoke with Chief Arnold about it, we know the individual is there, and we're trying to, uh, just to get taken care of, so if he doesn't get taken care of, it should already timed out. We've been wrapped up on a couple of other projects here this week, so we have to...
And then I wanted to check with you, sir, on what is the procedure for, we have our new, um, leaf back, and it looks like the leaves are staying, on staying on.
Well...
So, we're looking at a, and we had frost this morning.
That's what I had a little note here, just to let you know that, starting next week, we're gonna start, we're supposed to start re-fleshing next week? You're absolutely correct, things aren't dropping yet, but we're gonna start getting the, uh, the new leaf box now, and we got a lot of things we need to do with the truck, with the new leaf box, and we've got everything ready. We got both pieces of equipment already ready to go.
So, do we have, and as Mother Nature's showing her hand, are we gonna be ready when you have to switch back and forth to salt to, I hate to say that dirty word in here, but
That's bad.
it looks as if we're gonna be well into November with leaves this year, and then you guys happen to do the, set up the plow, and then take the plows off, and then set the trucks back and forth. Will we at least be able to have two trucks set up to go, so you don't have to alter back and forth?
Yeah, we'll have two trucks ready to go, we'll have a big seven fifty, and then a pickup ready to go with blades and spreaders on it, so if we had to go out, we can, you know, it's always a situation we run into every winter with just that, you know, a lot of times we're running late with the leaves, just because of what Mother Nature does. And it's a dilemma that we could possibly run into at any time, if it's a major snowstorm, then we have to break everything down, and then get everything set back up, and then go back, you know, the other direction, but a lot of things, depending on what happens.
So, my suggestion is, I'm just curious, a lot of times we sell this equipment off, and some of it, you know, like some of the five fifties and the different ones we sold, went for five thousand, six thousand, would it behoove of us to keep a truck, even if we use it through the summer as, uh, you know, we're needing a dump truck for something? As, yeah, backup and et cetera, that we have a designated truck, once you set it up, you don't have to tear it down for the fall. So, in the future planning, if we keep a vehicle, because if we're only getting five thousand, six thousand out of it, it might be something either, um, if it's a backup truck, we just use it for salt and plowing for now, and then you don't have to worry about switching over to the other vehicle.
Yeah, cause that, that can be pain when you're...
Yes, it's a lot of man hours.
That sounds like a great idea. Knock on wood, we really haven't...
Or vice versa, you could use it for the salt blocks, leave it set, whichever way you wanted to do it, A and B or B and C. So...
Did you get your, speaking of trucks, do you get, you get your, is it fixed, or anything rocking off?
It drove me nuts for about a week trying to track it down, and believe it or not, it ended up just being something so simple that we all just kind of overlooked, but yeah, so it's good to go.
Good deal.
I'll let you start, and then wherever you decide you wanna go with it, that's up to you.
I just wanted to update the board, uh, the quotes for the new road department building are due, um, October twenty-second. The week after that, uh, we'll do the opening, and, uh, then we'll review all the bids, and decide on who the best contractor is to start the project. Uh, we're working with the, the township's architect that, that was hired. He is, we need a, a permit approval through zoning, through the county, for the new building. Uh, so that, it doesn't sound like that's gonna be a complicated process, and we should be fine with, with that. I just wanna make sure we dot the i's across the t's. And then lastly, um, and I have to compliment Jim and his crew. If you haven't noticed, behind the other service garage and behind the police module, Jim's guys took a couple of days to absolutely make that area look pristine. They took all the vegetation out, they laid gravel down, and it actually turned out to be, how many more parking places?
I measured it out yesterday and laid it out, we should be able to put an additional twenty-one to twenty-two parking places. Not to mention, once we do something with the island.
Yes, and the island's coming out, and, uh, you'll, you'll pave the middle of the island where the, um, and the first step was, with the new building, we're gonna lose parking here for some of the firefighters. So, we thought, well, where are we gonna put them? So, we decided we might as well just clean that whole area up, uh, that I spoke of earlier. And it's kinda interesting, I, I got an initial quote from a contractor, and they wanted, um, seventy-six thousand dollars to do that project. Jim did it with his guys in two days at a cost of fifteen thousand dollars. Yeah, so, we're gonna finish it up, put some parking blocks out there, put some bollards up around the, uh, propane tank and the heating unit.
We have those in-house.
So, there, we just, it, it really does, it, it, it's clean, it added more parking, um, and I think it'll help, you know, I know we're worried about the snow, we're trying to, to keep it clean, but it's a huge improvement.
Yeah, I dressed you there, it looks really nice.
So, that's, that's the latest on, on the building?
And, and we'll have plenty enough room for police and firefighters and road crews to park back there.
Yes, yeah, we won't have an issue with, with trying to squeeze vehicles in and trying to find...
I want to, uh, bring something to the board's attention, we might have to do. Um, I'm sure these, uh, firemen like to park back here, because they keep, can keep an eye on their car. If we're going to ask those firemen to park over there, we may need to consider some better cameras and some security. You know, uh, unfortunately, I mean, I remember you talking about batteries being stolen out of your equipment, and different things like that. So, we have to take care of our, uh, people, so I just wanted to put that on the, uh, forethought of the board to, that we may need to do something about that.
Or even fencing.
I, I've, I've talked to Mr. Major this morning about possibly doing a ten-foot fence of barbed wire. So, we, um, we already installed a large LED E light on the backside, I don't know if you've been in here at nighttime and seen it on the side of the building. And we're thinking about putting, he was talking about today, we'll put another one up there too, so we ought to be able to completely illuminate that whole back end.
That'd be awesome.
And that'll help getting salt too.
And then before you get away, I wanted to thank you and your crew for taking care of the old car wash on the left-hand side of Three C Highway, uh, much appreciated, that insulation was just blowing down the road, and blowing down the road, and a lot of phone calls over that, so I know it's not necessarily, we, we, we've sent a letter to that guy, but I don't still think we've heard back, not a word, so.
Yeah, I haven't heard anything back.
So, thank you.
And, uh, thank you for taking care of that, that plank, that's a plank, yeah, plank, and, uh,
Plank and the...
Yeah, that was a mess. I, I seen the pictures, and I stopped up there, and it was a complete unfortunate, we've got situations like that that we're completely unaware of, and do it where it's ugly head, just from that sanitary project. I, I, I think we're gonna have a lot of this, and, and unfortunately, we can't go back against Deer Creek Astounding, because they're bankrupt.
With our camera that we've been using, which is another project that we're working on now throughout the township, dropping a camera and just inspecting, what we're running into is money back. You got a ten-inch storm.
Yeah.
You put a camera in, and the next thing you know, you run into, what they did is they just took, uh, where there was ten-inch storm, and they just laid a piece of six-inch pipe down in it, where your camera can't go for ten inches to that, and we run into that a lot.
So, um, at one point, they, they definitely had a, um, I lost the name it was called, an insurance, they were bonded.
It was bonded, the bond...
So, if we, the bond company, even though you go back and you find something, if you've documented this, why don't we, um, get ahold of the county and find out who the bonding company was, because that is still good, that bond would still be active.
It's timed out.
For how many, is it, it's been five years?
Oh, it's been longer than that, it's a three-year, cause I know the bond that we held on them was a three-year bond.
Okay.
That was a three-year bond.
And it's been at least seven, six or seven years.
Yeah, we've been, uh, but ours was a, don't answer your question, ours was a three-year bond that we have.
But you've documented this and keep it, just in case, somewhere down the road, when the county's doing something again, say, look, this is what happened to us before, and we share it, we wanna make sure, because they had a county inspector right there on site.
And Jim had the county out there.
Oh, the county seen this?
Oh, yeah.
Okay, they're aware of it.
I made sure we covered.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, it looked like a party out there, we had so many people out there.
It's like, where do you sign up for a job like that? One guy digging, six watching.
Well, yeah, wish it was like that, but that's all I've got. You gentlemen got anything?
Nope.
Thank you.
And the permit, the zoning permit, that's the only permit we'll need, correct?
Well, we'll need permit for the, the capping of the waters.
Right, yeah.
And that's it, yes, sir?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
What else do you have for us?
I have, um, motions for bills and payroll. Uh, the first one is a motion to approve accounts payable. Uh, being resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board makes a motion to approve accounts payable from October one, twenty twenty-four, through October eleventh, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of two hundred eighty-two thousand, three hundred and sixteen dollars and twenty-five cents. From electronic payment vouchers, number seventeen ninety-eight, twenty twenty-four, through nineteen thirty-seven, twenty twenty-four, and the exhibit is attached. For your review, if you'd like.
So moved as the motion is written, and I'd ask for a second?
I will second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I will ask for a roll call vote.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
Gentlemen, the next thing I have is a motion to approve payroll written, payroll reports is written, presented on October seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. Being resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board makes a motion to approve payroll for the pay period beginning September twenty-second, twenty twenty-four, through October fifth, twenty twenty-four, in the gross amount of one hundred eighty-seven thousand, two hundred and fifty-one dollars and thirty-eight cents. The ACH Direct Deposits to Staff for this pay period were made, were made on October eleventh, twenty twenty-four, via electronic vouchers, eighteen sixty-nine, through nineteen thirty-six, twenty twenty-four. And again, as exhibit is attached, for your review.
I would move, uh, as a motion, make a motion that they're accepted as the motion is written, and I would ask for a second.
I stepped out for a moment.
I'll second. Can we have a roll call?
Yes, Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeser?
Yes. Good catch, John.
Where did that come from? She just went, can't review your account.
I got it on here, and cut.
The next is Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one seven-three, it's a resolution to provide supplemental appropriation number thirteen for the period commencing January one, twenty twenty-four, and ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Whereas it is necessary to provide for the current expenditures and other expenditures of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, during the year ending with December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And whereas the Annual Appropriations Resolution twenty twenty-three dash two seven zero, for the period from January one, twenty twenty-four through December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four, needs amended. The sums presented in Exhibit A, here to attach B, and the same are hereby set aside and appropriated for several purposes for which expenditures are to be made for and during the year ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. These are formal actions of this board concerning and relating to the adoption of this resolution that was passed in an open meeting of this board, and that all deliberations of this board and any of its committees have resulted in such formal action were in compliance with all legal requirements, including Section one two one point two two of the ORC. This resolution shall be declared an emergency, and shall be in force and effective immediately upon its adoption.
So moved as the resolution is written, I would ask for a second?
I will second.
Any discussion on this matter? Hearing no discussion, I would ask for a roll call.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
Next resolution I have is twenty twenty-four dash one seven four, obligations approved by the Township Administrator between October one, twenty twenty-four, and October fifteenth, twenty twenty-four. The Board of Trustees, a Resolution twenty twenty-one dash one thirty, authorized the Township Administrator to approve incurred obligations of ten thousand dollars or less on behalf of the Township in accordance with Section five oh seven point one one of the ORC. Pursuant to the provisions of Section five oh seven point one one A of the ORC, the obligations approved incurred by the Township Administrator must subsequently be approved by the adoption of a formal resolution of the Board of Trustees. The obligations authorized by the Township Administrator is presented in Exhibit A attached are hereby approved. Uh, these are formal actions of the board concerning related to the adoption of this resolution that was passed in an open meeting of this board. In such formal action, we're in an open meeting of the public, and we're in compliance with all legal requirements, including Section one two one point two two of the ORC. This resolution shall be declared an emergency, and shall be in full force, effective immediately upon its adoption. And the amount is sixty-five thousand, seven hundred and thirty-three dollars and sixty-eight cents.
So moved as the resolution is written, I would ask for a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion on this? Hearing no discussion, I would ask for a roll call vote.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
This, reading this will put you right to sleep, the baby will go right to sleep, I promise.
I'll take him off.
I promise.
And this will definitely go.
Initially, initially trustees, you'll see, was a Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one seven five, that's for an unsafe structure. I did not want to present that yet, because, um, Todd Braker has been gracious enough, he is working on the report, and I can attach that resolution for the trustees, so the next meeting, we will have that.
Okay.
But I do have Resolution twenty twenty-four dash one seven six. It's a resolution declaring the property owned by Sean Furlong, located at one two two one Brown Road, a nuisance. Whereas the Franklin Township Board of Trustees has found the property owned by Karen Mitchell, located... Is that right?
One Brown Road.
No, 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 no. There's a typo in that. It's parcel number one four zero dash zero zero one three three six dash zero zero, is littered with garbage, refuse debris, including but not limited to solid household waste, miscellaneous cardboard, plastic containers, miscellaneous building materials, miscellaneous metal trash refuse, and debris. Pursuant to five oh seven point eight seven of the ORC, the board is authorized to determine that the maintenance of the vegetation, garbage, refuse, and other debris upon, upon the property constitutes a nuisance, and orders the property owner to remove such vegetation and debris within seven days. If the owner fails to remove the refuse and, and debris, or to make arrangements for the removal within a limited time period, the board may proceed to remove the refuse and debris, and enter the cost of such removal upon a tax duplicate of the property. And it is best interest of Franklin Township and its residents to proceed under five oh five point eight seven of the ORC to remove the garbage, refuse, and debris. To remove the garbage, refuse and debris from the property. So being resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board has found that the property owned by Sean Furlong located at one two two one Brown Road. Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, known as parcel number one four zero. Zero zero one three three six dash zero zero, Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, is littered with garbage, refuse and debris. The board hereby is determined that the maintenance of the garbage, refuse and debris on the property. Constitutes a nuisance pursuant to five oh five point eight seven O R C, orders the following action. The Board of Trustees may provide for abatement control, removal of vegetation, garbage, refuse and other debris from the, from the land in the township. If the board determines the owner's maintenance of that vegetation, garbage, refuse or other debris constitutes a nuisance. At least seven days before providing for the abatement control. Or removal of any vegetation, garbage, refuse or other debris. The Board of Township Trustees shall notify the owner of the land and any holders of liens of record upon that.
Land.
The owner is ordered to abate control, remove vegetation, garbage, refuse or other debris. The owner's maintenance of which has been determined by the board to be a nuisance. If that vegetation, garbage, refuse or other debris is not abated or removed. Or provisions for the abatement or removal are not made within seven days. The board shall provide for the abatement control or removal. Of any costs incurred by the board performing that task shall be entered upon a tax duplicate. And become a lien upon the land from the date of entry. The board shall send a notice to the owner of the land by certified mail. If the owner is a resident of the township or is a non-resident. Whose address is known, and by certified mail to lien holders of record. Alternatively, if the res, if the owner is a resident of township. Or is a non-resident whose address is known. The board may give notice to the owner by causing any of its agents. Or employees to post a notice on the principal structure, on the land. Into photographs that to post a notice with a camera capable of recording the data of the photograph on it. Uh, if the owner's address is unknown, it cannot reasonably be obtained, is sufficient to publish the notice once in the newspaper. Of general circulation in the township. If the board determines within twelve months. Consecutive months after a prior nuisance determination, the same owner's maintenance of vegetation or other debris on the same land in the township constitutes a nuisance. At least four days before providing for the abatement control or removal of vegetation or other debris. The board should give notice of the subsequent nuisance determination to the owner of the land. And to any land, any holders of liens upon record as follows. Um, the board shall send writ notice by first class mail to the la, of the la, owner of the land. And to any lien holders of record. Failure of delivery of the notice shall not invalidate any action to abate or remove the nuisance. Board may also give notice to the owner by causing any of its agents or employees to post notice on a principal structure, on the land. To photograph that posted notice with a camera capable of recording the date. Uh, if the owner's address is unknown, cannot be reasonably obtained, is sufficient to post notice on the Board. Of Trustees' internet website for four consecutive days. The owner of the land. Or holders of liens of record upon the land may enter an agreement with the Board of Trustees, providing. For either party to the agreement to perform the abatement control. Or removal before the board is required to provide the abatement control. Or removal under Division E of this section. Within seven days, this is Section E, within seven days after notice is given under Division B of this section. Or within four days is given under Division C of this section. The owner of the land fails to abate control or remove vegetation or debris, or no agreement for its abatement control or removal is entered. The Board of Trustees shall provide for abatement control. And may employ necessary labor and equipment to perform the task. All costs incurred shall be paid out of the Township General Fund. Uh, except that if costs incurred exceed five hundred dollars, the board may borrow from a financial institution. Uh, the Board of Trustees shall make a writ report to the County Auditor, the board's actions under this section. The board shall include in report a proper description of the premises and statement of all costs incurred. In providing for the abatement and removal of garbage, refuse and debris. Uh, as provided in Section, Division E, including the board charges for its services, costs incurred in providing notice, any fees or interest. To borrow money in the amount paid for labor materials and equipment. The County Auditor shall place a cost upon a tax duplicate. The costs are lien upon the land. From and after the date of entry, the costs shall be returned to the township and placed in the Township General Fund. Being further resolved, the board finds and determines that all formal actions this board concerning related to passing of this resolution were taken in an open meeting of the board. In our, uh, in compliance with the O R C, Section one two one point two two. Except as otherwise permitted thereby, and that this resolution shall be enforced and effective immediately upon its adoption.
I've got the correction here.
Yeah, Nicole already corrected it, um. Can you go over, whine, no, I'm just kidding, uh, resol, make a motion to accept the resolution as written. Um, I would ask for a second.
I'll second.
Uh, any discussion?
Yeah, did the baby go to sleep?
Uh, it's. And Madison got the baby to sleep with Steve's reading of that, so I think we're good there, um.
You have a second, sir.
Yeah, I have a second, thank you. Roll call, please.
Uh, Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
And thank you, Nicole, for.
Yeah.
Yes.
Correcting that quickly.
Uh, just a couple other things, trustees, the new H V's, H A C, H V A C unit was installed this week, working great. Uh.
Even though they see the only twenty years today, first day of frost.
Those poor guys who are out there to rain.
So my question is, did anyone not turn their heat on this week?
Really? Hold it off, huh?
Ah, man.
Um. And then, um, I sent you all an email. We have two quick claim deeds for properties on Whitehead. That, uh, COSIC has foreclosed on, they want to transfer ownership of the property to, uh, the township. I spoke with Julie, the council for the township. She's comfortable with this, there's really no paperwork that, that's involved with us. And we actually have a potential buyer for both parcels. Um, so I just wanted to, to get the approval of the board through a motion that, that we can proceed with this and transfer ownership to the township.
I would make a motion that we accept the quick deed process for said properties at parcel one four zero dash zero zero three nine oh eight. And parcel one four zero dash zero zero three nine oh nine on Whitehead Road.
I would second that.
Any discussion?
Um, yes. On, discussion on this, in the past, anytime that we went to sell the property, Franklin Township has been stringent on. Building something on there, and, you know, when they buy the property, they have to show what they're going to do and et cetera, we've been pretty successful. Are we sticking with that same premise?
I would be happy to make that stipulation on, on the, um, sale of the property.
It wasn't, it, it, there were stipulations, and I think Nicole would probably be able to pull them up better than I would. It's been a while since we did this, but even when we auctioned off property, it couldn't be a rental. And it had to be, um, it couldn't be a trailer or a modular. Um, it had to be an actual structure, and they had to be able to maintain it for so many years. Um, and so what that did, it was, it, it kept our township from being polluted with, um, something thrown together that was a rental or. Someone going in and saying, okay, I'm just going to put this up. Um, and it's really worked out well because it's welcomed new people into the township. That, um, were able to build their dream home that they wanted to and be in a community that, um, they would love to be in. And it also protects the residents of, as we're seeing. What's going to next door, do you really want affordable housing that is six stories tall? And it wasn't able to, the, the key is to annex it. So certain stipulations, which we'll have to check with Julie to see which ones we can really make stick. Uh, that's all I have, sir.
Any other discussion? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Leeser?
Yes. Motion carries.
Um. Next, um. I wanted to talk about, uh, the Team Sugeon negotiations. Um, I spoke with her rep. And he would like to start negotiations, uh, November fourth and November fifth. What I'd like to do is find out what is convenient for the trustees. Is to establish a time for an executive meeting. Where we can go into the details of the negotiation. Specifically, we are starting to get information on health insurance rates. And, um, that way I can get with the board. And we can discuss and know exactly where, where we are in preparing for the negotiating process.
I would make a recommendation that we do an executive session to discuss that on the fourteenth. November fourteenth.
Well, we have, we have a union.
On the fourth and the fifth.
Yes.
Why don't we do it, um.
Now, you have, you have a meeting.
We have a meeting, can we just come in before that meeting?
Yeah, that's a good idea, Mike.
Oh, yeah. But we wouldn't have their contract, what they're asking.
Unless they meet before, then that's what, Mr. Ross.
Well, you want to do your, I'm sorry, I thought he wanted to know what the board wanted to go into negotiations with.
Yes, yes.
Let's do it, yeah, okay, I misunderstood, I apologize. Let's do an executive session at ten thirty on the thirty-first. That's okay with you?
I'm good. Um. Terrific, and if the board, and I might as well throw this out now, so you can schedule this if you can. Uh, I've already presented to the union rep that the trustees may be in this process. I figured if we could get at least two of the trustees here, uh, it kind of kills two babies with one stone. And there's no back and forth where I'm being the messenger and dealing with you and this way.
Drop of communication.
Just, exactly, this way you hear it directly, if you're comfortable with that.
And we are doing both, correct? Two different contracts, but both at the same time?
Yes, uh, even though the one union group, their contract doesn't expire until next year. The union has been agreeable to do both of them at the same time and they get them on the same side.
Right, well, it would be a rule of thumb to do that.
Yes.
It benefits both parties.
Absolutely.
So it mean it's no, um, there's no downside there as far as I can see.
Right.
Then, the next thing I have, um, Nicole and I sat a meeting with, um, Revolution Group, who's the I T consultant for, uh, the township. And I think we've talked about this before, excuse me. Where they brought up the proposal of the township purchasing their ransomware security package. And, um. The big concern is with everything going on, um, with. Computers being hacked and, and, um. Ransoms being established for those computers that have been hacked. Uh, he, Eric Cabal, who's a representative of Rev Group. Suggested that we revisit this, having ransomware, so. Anything that comes from inside the township on a computer that goes out. Is better protected than what we have now. Uh, we unfortunately had an episode here. Where we had a computer hacked, um, and it took us quite a while. And we were fortunate that we didn't have any, any really serious problems. But we had an issue where a computer. From a township issued computer was being used, and again, unfortunately. For lack of a better term, it got.
It was being used very loosely.
Compromised.
Well, it was compromised, yes. That their outside sources got a hold of that and, um. Used it for.
Financial gain?
Yeah.
Well, in, in today's world, when you look at what just happened to, um, the city of Columbus and, um. Other government agencies, I think it's a good thing to sit down and discuss.
And the cost is, it's, it's, it's to install it, uh, the labor to install it is fourteen hundred dollars. And, um, I believe per, per computer. It's, it's two, it's two dollars and fifty cents per license, um. Which would cost the township approximately fifty dollars as a monthly service. So the one-time installation cost would be fourteen hundred dollars. And then the monthly service fee per workstation is, is fifty dollars. But again, as you said, this is just, I just wanted to present this to the board and we can, we can continue.
What's the total cost of that, seven thousand, five hundred and something?
Well, how many computers we have, we got?
Well, we'd be, I'm going to do my math, it's six hundred a year for the monthly service. And, uh, the one-time fourteen hundred dollar installation fee.
Seven thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars.
How much?
Huh?
How much?
Well, it's six thousand, we did that.
Six, six hundred.
It's six hundred and fourteen, isn't that, isn't that what you said, six hundred?
The fourteen hundred for the one-time installation.
It's two thousand, isn't it?
Yeah. Well, and then the monthly.
Right, comes to, the monthly would end up coming to seven thousand something.
Six hundred a year for the license.
That's right.
And then fourteen hundred for the one-time installation fee.
And then fifty dollars a computer per month.
Well, that would be it, the six hundred dollars would be.
He's not saying each computer, are you, you're saying a one-time six.
No, no, for each computer.
It's fifty each one?
It's, it's two, it's two dollars and fifty cents.
Ten, if you had ten.
Oh, it's two dollars and fifty cents per computer.
And he was saying with the number of workstations we have. It would be fifty bucks a month.
Okay.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
So doesn't that still come out to two thousand?
Two thousand dollars a year.
You just said, he's saying six hundred dollars.
Yeah, that's six hundred for fifty dollars a month.
Right.
So, and there is, where's the other six hundred dollars?
No, no, it would just be the license.
And then the fourteen hundred.
Would be a one-time installation cost. So the township.
Six hundred.
I, I, I think Nicole has something she.
Eight hundred and forty-nine dollars. Eight, eight hundred and forty dollars for the two together, the six hundred and fourteen. And that's, so we're looking at. Actually, that came.
That ain't right, it's two thousand dollars. Yes, Nicole?
Is, is that the pro, is that the product where he said that we wouldn't actually have that monthly cost because of our type of Microsoft license? Or is that something different?
That was the, um.
The defender?
The fourteen hundred is the one-time fee.
Yeah.
And then the six hundred is the.
Is that the defender?
Okay, that might be, okay, that's, that's the defender, there's one too.
I think eighteen hundred dollars. If you have these two added together, my computers.
You figure a thousand dollars.
Okay.
Initial fee, right, and then after that, it becomes six hundred a year.
Right.
If I understand.
Computers.
No, no, they.
Microsoft.
Our computers, he said.
Defender.
It's fifty dollars a month for.
Okay, I think.
So my question is, gentlemen, do we add them to our devices? Meaning, because when we check our emails and, and et cetera.
I think that covers them, don't it?
Did you add?
Covers that our devices, our phones.
Devices.
Because we check our emails on our phone and our tablet computers.
I'm sorry?
It's per Red Group managed workstation.
Okay.
Okay.
Is that right, Steve, it's a workstation?
Yes, yes. Because he, he get the flat, the flat cost he gave us was fifty bucks.
I think it's a bit fi, a bit fi, a bit...
A bit offender. What would you need from us, Mr. Meiser?
Not, I just wanted to throw that out there because I knew we had that discussion in the past, and, um, like I said, that the consultant brought it back up again, and I said, I'll bring it back to the board. It does have to be a decision to make unless you're prepared to do that, but it's something that you can just maul, and we can revisit it.
So, Mr. Chairman, how about if I make a resolution to accept the vendor's cost not to exceed seven hundred dollars a year to provide additional web security for each of our said locations, each of our said low, um, desk locations or units, um, effective whenever.
And, and the fourteen hundred dollars original and stuff?
Correct.
So, you're saying seven, you're saying the total cost be not to exceed twenty-one hundred dollars.
Correct.
And that would be Resolution twenty-four, uh, twenty twenty-four dash one seventy-eight, if I'm not mistaken.
One s, yeah, one seventy-eight.
Yeah. Um, I would second that resolution. I'd ask for discussion. Hearing none, I would ask for roll call.
Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
You know, one of the things that...
I don't have a problem with, sorry, John, I don't have a problem doing resolutions like this because we've all talked about it beforehand, this is just...
Yeah, this is exactly...
Yeah.
And this is exactly what I was going to say, because we're spending six hundred dollars plus the fourteen hundred, so twenty-one hundred dollars the first year, then six hundred dollars every year after. What would it cost the township if we had a situation that the city had where ransomware and et cetera? So, at least if we do our due diligence in trying to maintain, because the bad people out there are getting more savage and learning how to evolve, and if we don't keep up, then we're just open for right picking.
I agree. Anything else, Mr. Meiser?
Um, no, sir, that, that's it. Thank you.
Well, I was going to yield my time, um, for questions for the fire levy, but seeing most of them left. Ma'am, do you have any questions on the fire levy? Okay, um, I have nothing else, John?
I have, I do not, but I'm going to ask a question since you're new. This is just for me as a resident too. Uh, would you feel comfortable telling me what fire levy may mean to you and how you feel about it?
I have no idea. I'm going to be honest, I'm so sorry.
Okay, that's fine. I've just been asking as a trustee, but as a resident, when people call me about it and ask questions, I've been wanting to hear what they have to say because I don't want to sway someone, but I want to hear other people's concerns and things of that nature to make sure we're hitting the benchmark with what the, the public says. I didn't want to put you on the spot, but, you know, we haven't seen you here before, so I just thought this would be, um, a nice refresh, uh, possibly something that we could work with, so...
Oh, what all does it entail?
I'm sorry?
What all does it entail?
Chief, do you wish...
Chief, I'm yielding my time to you. Uh, it's basically an operating levy that has been needed to be replaced for over a decade. Uh, we finally got one together, we think it's going to work, it's going to keep both stations over open and keep the level of service where it's at now.
Sounds good to me.
So, what we're doing is we're doing away with three levies...
Okay.
And just consolidating how and when.
Okay.
Because you don't want to continue to every four years, oh, they put another levy on, it's just that those levies were continuing levies called a time levy. So, if we do away with the time levy and have one permit levy, we don't have to keep coming back to the public and it look as if, what are you doing with the money? Well, in my opinion, a time levy is meant for if you're getting a new fire truck, building a new station, after four years and that's paid for, that levy automatically goes away and, but you don't operate on that because if it fails, you have to cut your force off right then.
Right, yeah. I get that. That's good, too.
I do not have anything, sir.
Okay. Mr. Blevins, do you have anything else?
Just, I just, this is a business meeting and they discussed that earlier and everything, but I just want to let everybody know that I generally try to stay afterwards, and so, and the other trustees do too, but I mean, if, if you want to ask questions afterwards, please know, and this is for people at home, a new young lady with a baby here today and the gentleman that left, that we were happy to stick around afterwards, but we're just trying to get through business, that's all, I just wanted to explain that.
And we just, we can't have the interruptions of just wording out what...
I just wanted you to know that, and that's all I got, sir.
Good, thank you.
Are we done?
Nothing else, meeting's adjourned.
You got a second, Paul?
For sure.